And Experts Resource Number Five, if you're going to speak, please come to the microphone.
Hi, good evening Chairman and Commissioners, and my name is Winnie Tang and I'm Executive Director for the 99 CDCs. We've been doing service in these cities over twenty years and then most of our elderly and also we are right now home buyer education workshop and the citizenship program. And among those number, we at least have more than about thirty percent of our service is really to the target to the member in the city of North Miami. And in all over there, we also have a lot of people come from other city to over here. So our funding is really us really to continue for us to providing service for our elderly locally here and also help them to really learn some of the skill, computer skill, because a lot of time when they're getting old, they just think about they cannot really keep up with the current society. So the computer program is almost like ninety percent they are from the city of North Miami. And then also we are providing the bilingual citizenship class to the to the green card holders to be ready for the citizenship program. And hundred percent of those, we're just starting the program, hundred percent of those members is really from the city of North Miami, the elderly, because we want them to feel comfortable to learn English and also still using their language and be become a citizen so they can be productive citizen for our society. And the home buyer education workshop, and every month we have about almost like ten to fifteen attendees and about more than about twenty percent of them from the city of North Miami that we have them to achieve their American dream to become homeowners. And our program always be highly certified by our participants. They already rank our programs very high, highly satisfied from what they're learning from our program. So they can become a educated home buyer and then to be able to own their home and then they can be a stimulant to our society. And then this is all targeting the low income family. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You have a very nice website, by the way.
Okay, very good. All right, Item Five Experts Resource and someone from the Foundation for Senior Citizens, please come to the other microphone.
Good evening, Danny Felton, Experts Resource Community Center, Headquarters, six hundred Northwest One Eighty Third Street. We are actually a national intermediary, local affiliate of NID Housing Counseling Agency. We're a HUD approved organization. We provide various services such as home buyer education, foreclosure prevention, down payment assistance, and financial literacy for adults and youth. We've continued to provide these services through the years. We offer our courses in English, Spanish, and Creole for the residents here at North Miami. We host various workshops with the local commissioners in terms of sustaining homeownership through foreclosure prevention and loss mitigation services.
All right, thank you. How many of your clients are residents or potential residents of North Miami?
Every month, well, we've serviced at the North Miami Library, I would say, over twenty-five people a month here. And we do post purchase classes here. Last year, we serviced over a hundred people, local, over a hundred residents of North Miami.
Residents, okay. All right, thank you. All right. You look familiar.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Debbie Kleinberg. I'm the Executive Director of the North Miami Foundation for Senior Citizen Services. We've been in the community since nineteen seventy-four. Our goal is to provide seniors with the supportive services they need as they get frailer to remain independent for in their own homes for as long as they so choose. You'll see our bus transporting seniors to the grocery store. Our social workers visit clients in their homes to screen and assess and provide counseling. We have a small homemaker program. We also have a volunteer program that provides friendly visits, some phone calling, some chore services. And one of our mainstays has always been the home delivered meals program. It's been said that one out of seven Floridians aged sixty and over is experiencing the threat of hunger. And meals on wheels are a great intervention. We provide a varying degree of services from frozen meal packages to one weekday meals, to weekend meal service as well for the fralist, and breakfast meals for the fralist groups. So they're getting two meals a day, seven days a week. In the course of a year, over a hundred seniors who reside in North Miami are getting in-depth services from our organization. For the purposes of this grant, because it's scaled back in, you know, the size of the grant, we're looking, we submitted a grant for eleven thousand five hundred dollars to provide two meals a day, seven days a week to seniors. And we've been recommended for six thousand five hundred. Of course, we're grateful for any funding. And thank you for your time and be glad to answer any questions.
Good evening, Debbie.
Hi.
Are you scaling back the number of meals per day, or are you scaling back number of people?
In this, it would probably be the number of people. I'd still like to see the in-depth service going to the fralist and we'll try, you know, to find other ways to meet the needs.
Just curious, how do you, how do you judge, what's the criteria with having to judge, make that determination?
The, each of our social workers has been certified to utilize a State Department of Elder Affairs Assessment Tool. And part of that tool is a nutrition risk screening, which actually by a certain number of questions will come out with a score as to the level of nutritional risk. And it helps us to prioritize those most in need. And as the meals open up, we put, obviously, we're going to put the highest score first.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Most of them are intelligent, would you say, or?
I was just looking at that today for another grant. And of the people we serve in general, the number I came up with was seventy-three percent of the people we serve are at poverty level or below.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Russell Life Skills Number Seven and Walk in My Shoes Incorporated will be Number Eight. So let's have Number Seven and Number Eight come on up. Number Seven, you're Russell Life Skills.
Yes, I am. Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Niam Smith. I'm the Vice President of Mission Advancement for the Russell Life Skills and Reading Foundation, also known as Russell Education Foundation. We have been serving the community since nineteen ninety-eight. Our mission is inspiring and equipping underserved children and their families with the tools for continued success. The Russell Reading Program has been in partnership with the city of North Miami since two thousand and four at Sunkist Park. In two thousand and seventeen, we were recent, we were relocated to Griffin Park. We serve between thirty and forty-two children daily in our program. And we help low to moderate income kindergarten through fifth grade students become proficient on Florida State assessment and reading and math. And this is done primarily through using certified teachers to increase learning skills and reading and math. We work with students four days a week, Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday for two hours a day. Well, I have to cut this short. Any more information, you can go to our website, which is at www.russeleducationfoundation.com. We recently got it upgraded, so we're very happy about it.
All right, thank you very much, Neil. It's a pleasure.
You're welcome.
All right, Walk in My Shoes and someone from Miami Alumni Kappa Foundation, come on up to the next microphone. Walk in My Shoes, go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Saint Feine Jean-Baptiste, and I am the Executive Director for Walk My Shoes. And so Walk My Shoes is a fairly new organization. We work with students from at-risk communities. We are not, we don't necessarily look for the high, the top performing students. We partner, we speak to the principals of the schools, the counselors, the people who know the students most, because we want their recommendation on who do they believe if they had that right support at home are able to make it. So we work with those. So we serve small groups of cohorts of ten students. Each year, we recruit graduating eighth graders. So the summer before they start high school, we start working with them. And the program is unique in that we work with college students to be their mentors, someone who's old enough to lead, but young enough to relate. We really emphasize on that. So our groups, all of our students are in North Miami. We currently we're partnering with North Miami Senior High, recruiting students from Benjamin Franklin, North Miami Middle, schools that feed into North Miami Senior High. I'm trying to keep the time short. So again, we really emphasize on youth, leading youth, college students mentoring our students. We've had students coming in the program, their first time taking a math test. We can tell that they're performing below grade level. In two weeks, getting that one-on-one tutoring from someone, telling them, I believe in you, I expect you to graduate, and you see the improvement in two weeks. So I'm open to questions.
How do you measure your success?
Again, so we have some educators working with us. When they first start, the summer, before we even get started with them, they take some proficiency tests, both in reading and math. And at the end of the summer, they take it. Throughout the school year, we make it a goal to meet with each of their teachers. When the school year start at the open house, we go to the school, we meet their teachers. So the teachers know there's someone watching for that student. And at each grading period, we're monitoring their grades. And as necessary, we get them tutoring.
All right, any other questions? There are none, thank you very much. All right, we're ready for Kappa Achievement. And someone from, let's get the next speaker up there behind you. Family Corners will be over here. We get someone from Family Corners to line up. All right, Miami Alumni Kappa Foundation Incorporated, you have the floor.
Good evening, members of the Commission, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and staff. My name is Bernard Jennings. I'm a product of North Miami, a graduate from North Miami Senior High School. Served on a couple of Youth Opportunity Boards here, as well as under five mayors of the TF-101. With me today, I have Senator Daphne Campbell and one of our graduates from the program, who's a college student now at Florida Interuniversity, and a couple of the members of the Kappa Leaguers that are here now for this year, and a bunch of our brothers of the fraternity, please stand, our Pole Mark. Another one of our members, Attorney, Mr. Wallace, School Principal, Mr. Williams. And instead of going through all of them, I'll be short of the intros, but they're here in support of what we're doing today. Kappa Poseidon Fraternity was founded in nineteen eleven, so we're a hundred and seven years old. Our local organization has chapters throughout the world, some hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifty-something thousand members throughout the world. We operate on an undergraduate level throughout colleges, throughout the United States and abroad, as well as we operate in local municipalities and cities throughout the nation and throughout the world as either an alumni chapter or an undergraduate chapter. So we're professionals giving back to the community through our mentorship program, which is the Kappa League, which these young men that are here from middle school through high school that we serve, and we teach them leadership skills. The Kappa League is a college and preparatory leadership and enrichment program designed for middle school and high school age males throughout the county. Specifically, this year, we've applied to the North Miami CBG Funds because we have created a partnership with the local principal, Mr. Patrick Locardi. And we've met with him and the middle school personnel to actually create sixty-five percent of our program participants, which will be thirty-three students from the city of North Miami. We have our own facilities to house the program, as well as we'll share some of the facilities at North Miami Senior High School to make the program a success. We help students with college preparatory. We have a hundred percent matriculation rate for the last five years. We've graduated at least ten students from the program that went on to local and colleges and universities abroad from Florida State University, Florida Anam University, Purdue University, University of Florida, Howard University, Bethune-Cummins College, Florida Atlantic University, University of Central Florida, and it goes on and goes on and goes on. One of our key students is Mr., you might recognize this name, his name is Ernest Dorville. He's a graduate of North Miami Senior High School. He created the first engineering program, after-school program for high school students in the country, specifically at North Miami Senior High School. It's now a national program. He graduated, went on to college at Florida Anam University, and now he's at, today, he's in Washington DC doing some kind of engineering mastering internship someplace. He's a phenomenal young man. He interned with Commissioner Monastine's office here in the city. And I want to have Mr. Calvin Sykes say something on how the program has helped him as a young man growing up.
Good evening, Councilpeople. I'm Calvin Sykes. I'm a product of North Miami. I grew up in this community. These men showed me the leadership qualities and given me, they showed me that there's life outside of the community to go out and venture off. Currently, I'm at Florida Anam University. I, yeah, and I've interned with Senator Campbell my freshman year, and I continue to work with her on different projects. So this program shows the success rate of talking about other people that I've seen in the program, as well as men like myself. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't want to take up all the time, but particularly the mentoring program has activities geared at...
You are taking all the time from the others, so.
Okay.
I know you don't want to, but you are.
Thank you very much for your support.
I do need to move that on, all right? Very nice presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, yes, they do a fine job.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, both members, good evening. My name is Maurice Sterro, representing Family Corners. Family Corners is a non-for-profit that has been in the city of North Miami since two thousand and five. We, with the mission actually to uplift and supporting the residents in the city of North Miami. We provided a range of services from parenting skill classes, domestic violence, anger management, conflict resolution, and specifically conflict resolution in the workplace. Right now, we are currently partnered with the North Miami Library with, for the Educational Job Readiness Program, which actually currently is moving on. We have a graduation on Thursday, which you guys are invited as well, at eleven o'clock in the morning to twelve o'clock. We inherited the, the bridge, connecting the bridge to literacy with prosperity. With the relationship that we have through the job educational program, so Ms. Nadege, which is the Executive Director for that organization, feel the necessity to actually transfer that program with us, which she has been, or her organization has been funded through the city for the past, what, three years?
Four years.
Four years. So this is our pleasure to actually continue working with the city of North Miami, with the library as well, to actually continue the service that Ms. Nadege will continue, you know, telling you guys a little bit about the successful story that she has.
Good evening, everyone. I've been here many times and presented prosperity to you guys. Nadege Wilson, the Executive Director, connecting the bridge to literacy has been funded over four years in the city of North Miami. And because we've established such great relationship, we have served over six hundred adults and about seventeen adults obtained their GD and graduated and now currently attending Miami-Dade Community College. Because I did not want to walk away from the program, and we're servicing a new program now, I connected together with Family Bridge so that they can continue on, Family Corners, so they could continue on providing the services to the city of North Miami with the relationship with the city of North Miami Library. I believe my time is up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. So the staff recommendation for the funding, will that go toward the bridge to literacy?
No, no, no.
Is specified for that, or to Family Corners, and how, how much of that?
Family Corners was funded, recommended for funded, for, to continue the adult literacy program.
Okay.
Prosperity is funded to continue to start the NOW project that is currently being provided at North Miami without no funding from the city. I just started there because the need was necessary for mental health for the youth in North Miami.
Okay.
Which is two different organizations.
All right. But again, the funding goes toward Family Corners?
Yes, sir.
Correct? And, all right.
Any other questions? Thank you. Have a good evening. Do you need Prosperity status? I'm already on the list. I can kill the time.
All right, you are now going to be speaking on behalf of?
Prosperity Social Community Development Group.
You're Number?
Number Twelve.
Number Twelve, actually. All right, so you're speaking on behalf of Number Twelve, okay. And you were not recommended for funding, but go ahead.
Yeah, I want to continue.
Yes, she was. Yes.
Yes, I was.
Number Twelve. Twelve, was five hundred.
But you only wanted twenty?
Right here.
Yeah, I wanted, no, I didn't. It was the error. They did call me about that, and I said, absolutely not, but.
I'll give you twenty dollars.
Oh, no. It's okay. Well, I want to let you know, guys, know that we're currently providing services now in the city of North Miami in calibration with the library, because we've had a number of mental health services that are issues that are occurring in the city of North Miami with the youth. And we've been working closely with the police department and providing services to the family that, and educating them about mental health and job services for youth. It is not being funded, and we have already served about forty youth in the city of North Miami. So when the CBG grant was open, we decided to apply for it so that we can be able to service more youth in the city of North Miami. However, we have been serving in the city of North Miami for over four years in the adult literacy. At the North Miami Library, we've served over six hundred adults residents in the city of North Miami.
All right, very good, thank you.
You can check my website. It's open.
I believe we have. I believe we have, thank you. All right, do we get anybody here from, let's see, eleven was, where was the, Avenue of Excellence, Number Ten? Anybody from Avenue of Excellence? Last call, hustle up here. All right, and let's get the next one in line, which I think is the Family Action Network Movement. Do we have anybody from that group? They'll be over here on this microphone next, okay? Go ahead, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rose Hedgman, and this is my partner, Robin Bear. I'm the Executive Director of Avenue of Excellence. It's been established since two thousand and nine. Our clientele ranges from Broward Community College, FIU University Miami, Upward Bound Program, and it goes on and on and on. Our program started in two thousand and nine by training on etiquette, social protocol, professional development, life skills, work readiness skills. Our premise of our organization is to show young, young children and adults not only how to behave properly, but actually we've developed a finishing school as well, where children are able to come in and work up through a six or eight week program. This is more than dining skills, this is actual life applications. Since then, in two thousand and eleven, we launched our own table linen line, and we discovered that we can actually provide a trade, since one of our clients was Job Corps in North Miami and in the homestead, unfortunately, due to the accident. So what we've developed is a sewing academy and work match opportunity. It's very simple. We've combined business etiquette as well as a trade. Youth and adults will go through an eight-week program in learning not only how to sew by hand, but also how to use applications by a sewing machine. Throughout that training, each time they receive a class, they will also be prepared with a resume. The resume will also be provided to them on flash drive. They'll have opportunity to be dressed. They'll also go through mock interviews. At the end of the eight-week program, we'll provide a work match opportunity, which we've already contracted to work with Career Source of South Florida. We also have worked with Chamber of Commerce so we can pull in placement services, in which case, at the end of the eight-week program, on the ninth session, they will receive an opportunity to get hired on the spot and get placed. And additionally, we are also hiring for two placements. So whoever goes through, we will be hiring as well.
All right, very nice. Thank you very much. Any questions?
I'm sorry, just real quick, where are you conducting your sessions now for North Miami?
Yes, sir. Right now, we do not have a location. We've already partnered, which can be provided with the MOU to Girls of Transformation. They have their site locations on Northwest Second Street. We've also, for numbers sake, and we have a website, sir, we also for numbers sake, we've serviced over one hundred citizens and residents of North Miami. This program is solely for North Miami.
But not within, but you don't have a facility here in the city, correct?
No, sir. Our, our location is in North Miami. We are North Miami residents. But no, we do not have a brick and mortar location, sir.
All right.
Okay.
Any questions? No? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, you guys are Family Action Network?
Yes, good evening. My name is Aline Francois. I am here representing Family Action Network Movement Fund located on a hundred Northeast Eighty-Four Street, Suite One Fifty, Miami, Florida, three-three-one-three-eight. I want to first of all, thank you all for the funding last cycle to provide the much-needed services for the residents of North Miami. This year, we hope that you will be able to continue the funding so that we can continue educating the community via radio workshops and providing assistance to becoming naturalized US citizens. With the support, we were, for last cycle period, we were able to provide consultation to over ninety individuals that are North Miami residents between January to June of two thousand and eighteen. And we were able to assist over thirty-eight individuals with citizenship applications from, anywhere from gathering documentation and to provide hands-on information and support.
All right, thank you. Questions?
No questions.
All right, very none. Thank you very much. All right, we're looking for a speaker for Art Academics and Manifest Foundation. Art Academics, off to my right, and Manifest Foundation to my left. Art Academics, you'll go first.
All right, good evening. I'm Vanessa Pierre, representing Art Academics Academy. We've been serving the North Miami population since two thousand and fifteen. Currently, we have an after-school program at Benjamin Franklin, a weekend program at Clyde Judson Center, and a summer camp program. It's outside of North Miami, but it services about, it services approximately eighty-three K to twelve North Miami youth and a total of one hundred and forty-five students served. So our Saturday program consists of the Culture Tech Labs, which we hold at Clyde Judson Center, which teaches the youth how to assemble and fly drones, as well as video production. Our summer camp program focuses on STEM and academics throughout the entire eight-week, throughout the entire eight-week summer session. And this is our third year in operation servicing the youth in North Miami.
Very nice. Questions?
Yeah, I have a question here. I did. Sorry, where did you say you were holding your sessions?
The Saturday sessions are at, are on the west side of North Miami, at the Clyde Judson Center. The after-school program is at Benjamin Franklin, which is also on the west side of North Miami. And our summer camp program is at Christ Community Church, which is not in North Miami, but services eighty-three total North Miami residents.
Since two thousand and fifteen, how many, how many students or how many children have you seen?
One hundred and forty-five total.
And the Judson Center is located where?
On one-twenty, one-twenty-first and Sixteenth Avenue, Northwest.
It's over on your side of town. Yeah. And have you, do you have any other funding avenues other than what you're asking?
Yes, I do have funding avenues. Two of the councilmen that sit on the dais have given some money. I am a prior recipient for this grant, and also the Children's Trust.
When did you get that grant? Because it lists here that you hadn't gotten the grant.
I haven't gotten it yet. I just, we just got awarded with this award season for the Children's Trust.
With the Children's Trust?
Yes. And the grant for this was two thousand and sixteen cycle.
Sixteen.
All right, any questions? None? Thank you very much.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, we have up the Manifest Foundation and Will Park Projects Incorporated. Step to the mic microphone, please.
Hello.
Manifest, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Brenda, and I will be speaking for the Manifest Foundation. When I was a girl, my parents were each working two jobs and learning English, like most immigrant families. While I was always their priority, they had little time to worry about my academic performance. My own priorities, even at that age, included maintaining the home and caring for my sickly grandmother. I struggled to enjoy subjects like chemistry and physics in high school, let alone envision a career in STEM. For those of you who may not be familiar, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Luckily, I found scholarships that allowed me to pursue higher education and mentors to guide me in a world I wasn't versed in. Many young students are not so lucky, and their own potential is sucked into this persistent vacuum. The Manifest Foundation was born from firsthand experience of the system. Our team identified one broad pervasive problem, primary and Our team identified one broad pervasive problem, primary and secondary schools place, preach outdated curricula, placing too much emphasis on concept and little on application. As a result, students are left making little to no connection between STEM and relatable real-world scenarios. In our three years of operation, we've conducted workshops throughout Miami Dade and Broward County addressing this issue. Our leaders teach using open-ended and guided discussion methods, paired with activities that enable our students to incorporate the scientific method in their questioning and learning. We curated a full academic program called Science in the City, that brings students of diverse backgrounds together to immerse them in STEM experiments modeled around college and career level standards. If you direct your attention to the document that you were given, you'll find pictures and summaries of each workshop. The last academic year covered disciplines from environmental science to coding, all centralized around the marvel of space exploration. Each workshop connects what's taught with careers in the growing STEM market, equipping our students with the knowledge needed to pursue these careers. Our leaders consist of a mix of college volunteers and educators, who prior to participation, receive manifest training and preparation, ensuring our volunteers and students alike get the most from our content. Science in the City is open to anyone and everyone who wishes to attend, situated in central locations accessible to families of varying socioeconomic backgrounds. The program resulted in ninety percent attendance retention, with growing participation at each location. Students who finish our program participate more confidently in their science classes and show piqued interest in pursuing STEM long-term. Our program growth will be doubled in size at the start of this academic year, and our impact continues to show observable results. And we're honored to have been invited here tonight with all the organizations here to showcase our work. We were previously acknowledged by the city of North Miami with Excellence in Service recognition in two thousand and fifteen, and we can, we hope we can work with you guys to bring our impact to your community.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Yeah, how many kids do you, how many projects have you done in North Miami?
Yeah, so, our third year in, a little bit over forty projects, serving close to three hundred kids. Outside of the last two years, we spent eight months in Lyndon Linton, which is about seven hundred kids, providing STEM education for free for those kids.
How many seven hundred kids?
Seven hundred kids at Lyndon Linton for eight month cycle, that we provided for free through private foundations. And then beyond that, I believe we're the organization with partnerships with all three universities, that are being volunteers directly from universities into the programs that we're going to bring in.
I'm sorry, you said the numbers you gave were for city of North Miami?
No, that's for Lyndon Linton alone, that's for one middle school.
Oh, okay.
And then we have the three community centers we operate out of, Joe Celestine, the church next to it over here.
Okay.
You've been doing it for three years?
Yeah, three years so far.
Had you come before asking grant money prior to last year?
This is the first time, we've been operating private funding, part of this.
All right, that explains something.
So you have private funding, but no, no?
So we've gotten private funding from the Knight Foundation, some private corporations, and that's how we've been essentially providing the services for free. This is the first time we've approached the city.
We also currently got funding from MDC, the Innovation Grant for this cycle, so.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. All right, let's see, that was, do we have the Park Project? Yes, that's you, and then William Clark over here, and MJD Wellness will be next in line over here. All right, go ahead.
Well, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present. My name is Marley Q. Casanova, and I'm the founder of Park Project. Our mission is very simple and a clear acronym, PARK, it stands for Perform Acts of Random Kindness. Our mission is to inspire people to perform acts of random kindness and come together to create a shift that our culture definitely, desperately needs. The spark of our event, the very first event, was in two thousand and eleven, on the tenth anniversary of nine eleven, and the spark of this particular grant funding cycle or grant request that we're making is due to the February fourteenth school mass shooting in ironically Parkland, Florida. I decided to deliver a TED Talk on the topic, it's called Kindness is Your Superpower, it's on YouTube. In less than four months, it's got over five thousand views, and I have been speaking at different schools throughout Miami Dade County, impacting over two thousand students so far. I requested funding from you all specifically for North Miami schools, elementary, middle, and high schools. I identified ten schools, and obviously depending on funding, we can, we can impact more students. This is addressing the urgent and persistent problem, proactively addressing our youth's mental health problems, and trying to reduce the amount of bullying and prevent school shootings like that to continue happening. We are also addressing, not just going and doing a speaking tour and a nice day for them to be inspired and feel good with a nice message, but actually creating relationships with these schools by offering meaningful community service and volunteer opportunities year-round for elementary, middle, and high school students. I have been doing this kind of work, creating events and volunteer opportunities for nonprofits for the past two decades. Specifically for the nonprofit, we are one hundred percent volunteer-driven, we have no staff, we have no funding, it is all one hundred percent people that want to create a better world, and really want to inspire people to park, and it really starts with our youth. So that's really what we're asking money for today, is to impact as many youth as we can in North Miami through an inspirational speaking tour. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Questions?
No, but anything that promotes kindness is a good thing.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
What was your website again? I'm sorry, your YouTube?
No problem. If you go to parkproject.org, that's our main website, but the YouTube video, you go to marleyq.com, and I have a link right on there.
Okay.
Okay, Marley, M-A-R-L-Y, sort of like Bob Marley, but not really.
All right, William Clark, you're next, and then MJD Wellness over here.
Well, gentlemen, thank you, the name says William Clark, but the name should be DCS Mentoring Program.
All right.
I'm a retired firefighter, lifelong resident of Miami Dade County, thirty-year resident of North Miami. After my retirement, I embarked on this mentoring service a couple of years ago. I had the same concern that Mr. Patone did, in that we can get up here and say a lot, but I'd rather show you what we do. That's why I spent a couple of hundred dollars putting this presentation together. And I stayed here to learn the process. We may be novices in filling out the application, but we are pros in doing the work, and I just wanted to show you the type of work that we do. As you can see, we purchased suits for our young men as a part of our etiquette program. We were featured on Channel Ten just Saturday, you can go to their link about feeding our kids and going to a restaurant right next door at Nomi's, you can go on their link and see that footage. The next page, you can see us going to an elderly person's house to give back to the community. He needed his yard cut, he needed his, the situation, his home taken care of, so we sent the whole crew over there to do a little painting, yard cutting, as we do a little exercise in the morning. Our mentors consist of professional firefighters, police officers, one of our mentors is ex-Correction Miami Dade Correction Chief Lonnie Lawrence, who gives us guidance. We have a water safety program, we are guests at the Country Club of Miami twice a year for golf lessons. We start the day off with a firm handshake and a good morning, sir, and looking one in the eye and being strong. As you can see, we're there with another trip to our hotel, I mean, our restaurants, and last but not least, our dining, our etiquette class is second to none. So we also, if you continue on, we have, we take our, as a part of our financial literacy campaign, we take, have a bank come in and teach us the X's and O's to start in a bank account, but the second half of that day, we take him to a black millionaire's house so that he can teach them how to gain money legally, instead of trapping and rapping and everything else.
That would be nice.
And then we, we just introduce again water safety, we just took him to a Leder Park for rafting exposition. So we do good work in the community, we'll get that other part straight about the X's and O's and the application, and you'll see us next time. And last time, you'll see our firefighter friends coming out and giving them hands-on with the, with the tools and whatnot, we've even had the helicopter come out and show them how to deal with that particular project. So we do good work, we may be soft on the application process, but you'll see us again.
Process is that. All right, MJD Wellness and Community Center.
Yes, good evening, everybody, my name is Emanuela, I am a Health and Wellness Counselor, graduate from Liberty University, and I have a degree in med, but not here, it's from Dominican Republic. So, MJD Wellness and Community Center, we are a nonprofit organization, that's our advocate in fighting for people to have good health and being well. Why we, we are a bunch of graduate student, high school, we work in most with the kids to help the community to be well. What we do every, since two thousand and thirteen, we start a wellness program, helping people to know how to eat, lose weight, and be in health. If you don't have a primary doctor, we knock on the doors and we say, please, can you see that client for us, because they don't have insurance, they need to see a doctor. In two thousand and sixteen, I started doing health care, thanks to the city of North Miami, they always open Griffin Park, they let us do it. First time I did it, that was five hundred people. And with the help with FLEC and another organization, we were able to serve since two thousand and sixteen to now thirty-eight hundred people. And now, we have a food drive under the bridge every month on Seventh Avenue. So we provide them health and wellness services for free, so they are allowed to see a doctor, and if they have any, they need any social services, they come under the bridge, because we don't have a location, but we happy under the bridge, we serve them, they come. Three hundred people that we are serving, with what? With our money, with our friend, we tell them, please, help us out, because we have needy people. Me, myself, and all the kids, we don't make enough money to carry those people, we are not political, and we don't have nothing. Today, I come here to ask you guys to help us out. We cannot leave them alone, they need help. Please, help us, we need to help more people. And on October thirteenth, we're gonna have our third annual fair, and we have a couple of people that helping out to see if we can have mammogram, and a lot of health services for free for the community, and our community needs help. We, like he said, I never write a grant, because all my life, I've been in med school. So I don't know how to write grant, but I know how to serve people, how to make you healthy, because without health, no one can be here. So please, help us out, that's what I come for. And I have a presentation, I think that there's no time to do it, but maybe I'm gonna, like, send it to the city or give you our Facebook, we cannot have a website, because too much money to do it, it's MJD Wellness and Community Center on Facebook, if you look, you're gonna see us working under the bridge and giving people services. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, public hearing is open for anyone wishing to speak to the issue at hand. One, two, three, no members of the public coming forward, all right, public hearing is closed. Chair, I'll call for a motion. Well, here we go, motion, we're gonna do a discussion.
A little discussion, I guess.
All right, and have some discussion.
I, everybody's staring at me, because I probably want to breed, I would probably breed chaos in this right now. Having looked, having listened, you guys did a wonderful job tonight. I'd like to thank all of the presenters for the job they did. The information we've received, I got more information just now than I had in the last week looking at the packets. I think that the judging process, I think the whole process is defective, and it's not just the naivety on some of the applicants or the inexperience of filling out applications, because just on the limited amount of information I've got, I would have reordered the recipients, I would have reallocated the funding differently. Like I said, it would be chaos, so I don't know that we have that luxury, because I think City Council wants to listen to this tomorrow night, is that correct? So, I don't know, I mean, what to tell you, it's, we have what we've got here, I really disagree with it, I disagree with the rank order of the people, I disagree with the amount of money we've given people, and I disagree with the evaluators, and I think somebody, Tanya, you need to, they need to send, they need to send the right people, or they need to sit down and get schooled on it. I just see that they're, the order, the inconsistency in the grading system is, can be corrected. It's just people need better information. So I don't know that there's anything we can actually do, and I think that's where we started this conversation.
Yeah, well.
Without, without taking the whole thing apart.
The reality is, you can only make recommendations, and if we tear all this apart, the end result will be?
Chaos.
Yes.
Chaos, well, if I might, Ms. Chairman?
You may, Mike.
I think everybody here did a fabulous job, and I wish all of you got as much money as you wanted. Really, if it were, if it were minded giveaway, I'd certainly do that. But again, I think, you know, piggybacking on what Bob said, we're pretty much stuck where we are. Otherwise, it would be real chaos, I don't think going for, going, going forward, I certainly hope that somebody on staff doesn't think that it's more important to save a little bit of paper than it is to keep everybody informed on all the things that needs to, needs to be done. But I think we're sort of stuck with what we have, even though I, you know, as I said, if I had, if I had my way, I'd fund everybody, because you all did a great job and you all performed a great service. You know, all the way from feeding the elderly in our community, who certainly need to be fed, to those that just want to promote kindness, which is a, which is a good thing as well, to the sciences, to the, you know, to the helping the girls, and it just, it's all good stuff. But as I say, I guess we're stuck where we are with what we have.
My only thought is that hopefully those that don't get funding, please try again, try other municipalities, don't give up. Everybody here that spoke made a wonderful presentation, I wish, like everybody else, we're all in agreement here, we wish we could give everyone the funding that they needed. You obviously are working very hard, and, you know, I wish you all the best of luck whether or not you got funding, and if you didn't, please come back again, reach out to other municipalities, find ways to keep your project going, don't give up, please don't give up because of not getting funding tonight, just, and we thank you, we thank you for your time, because there's just, there's so much in need out there in the community, and it's so greatly appreciated, I know, by everybody up here. So thank you.
All right, having said, oh, go ahead, Ms.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to at least give my, chime in as well, and just to say the same thing, the same sentiments, is that, you know, it's all important work that everybody does, sometimes we don't always get what we ask for, but that's still, it shouldn't discourage anyone in this room. It's great to see a lot of community activity and everyone giving back their own personal time and efforts to make all these great things happen, and so for that, you know, I commend everyone in the audience who came here and took the time to do so, and so, I just thank you.
All right, having said that, first, the presenters, you did a fine job, and this is televised, or at least it educates the citizenry on your agencies in what you do. To staff, the commission has two serious reservations about all of this. One, the planning commission does not receive the benefit of the financial data on these organizations, nor do we get the benefit of their numeric participation. Without in-depth reports, we have no questions to ask. We are stuck with the position of being a glorified rubber stamp, which is not an efficient use of our time as city volunteers, certainly not appreciated. Relative to the other side of the coin, I think the process has a number of flaws, and one of which is, apparently, the evaluators do not get the benefit of the verbal presentations of the presenters. And so what we're left with are two unequal boxes, and these two ships in the night seem not to have a common meeting point. And this leads to an extremely un-. unbalanced evaluative process in the end. And if I were to make two changes going next year, I would say since you're getting the data forward to the planning commission, the financial reports, and the participation numbers, and require as part of the process the five evaluators have oral presentations from these presenters. Given that some of these presenters have no experience in grants and are volunteer-driven, perhaps the city needs to consider next year a class in basic grand writing. If this is what we require, this is how it should look. This is what we're looking for. This is what it means. And otherwise, some of these these groups that lack professional staffing are never going to get to first base. So having said that, and we congratulate the presenters and we thank staff for their diligence, the chair will call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, Jason James moves to approve. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
All right, Mike McDeermay has a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Approved unanimously. Thank you all very much. This goes to the commission tomorrow night. Good luck to all of you.
Sir, I have the the correct site for the resolution.
Let's go ahead and read that. This will be an amendment to, yeah. All right, let's go ahead and yes, add red into the record.
Ms. Warren and I both looked at it, and the section is in your materials, but it wasn't in the reso.
Which unfortunately, the reso's what we're looking at, yes.
Right. It's twenty-four CFR section five seventy point two zero one E. Two zero one is the section that lists the eligible activities, and E is the one that pertains to public services. I would leave out the one, E one, because the one is the one that limits it to fifteen percent, but that's not really needed for the authorization. So you're looking at five seventy point two zero one E.
What's the citation again?
Twenty-four CFR section five seventy point two zero one E, which is almost the same as the one on page one of the staff report, but omit the last, the last one.
Got it.
Okay?
Two oh one E. Okay.
What do you think of the resolution number?
Yeah.
The resolution number? Sorry, reading into the record.
If you will, give me that.
It was the federal regulation they cited that was wrong. That was one relating to the technicalities of the definition of costs. So it was clearly inappropriate.
Is it necessary, is it a legal matter for us to read that in technically and take a vote, or are we satisfied it's an amendment to the minutes?
I would take it as an amendment to the to the resolution.
All right.
Right, and this will ultimately obviously be adopted by the City Council.
Okay. And we, do we, there was a question on the second set of minutes. Has anybody resolved that issue?
According to my notes, and I don't have my agenda, but these are the handwritten notes of what happened. There was a call, a move, a motion to call or a request to call the question, write a motion, and it was moved by Mr. James, but then I have that it was seconded by Mr. Patone, who did vote against. So the secretary would like to check her notes before she makes any changes to the minutes. If they match, then with your approval, she'll go ahead and make those final, but if not, she'll bring it back to you for your further.
Was that the issue? I thought the issue was Mr. Ernst.
He was collecting.
He was, right, because.
Not here and seconded a motion.
Exactly. So who actually did second it? And according to my notes, it was you, sir. But.
I voted against it.
Exactly, which is why we also want to make sure that.
Exactly.
Because the motion was, the motion was to call the question, right, as proposed, and you voted again. But we want to make sure that's how it was, and if it wasn't, it'll come back to you at the next meeting.
All right.
We're gonna double-check the video.
We will be meeting in September, I assume. Does staff have a, we're not gonna meet in August, so I'll let all you guys know. There's no meeting in August. I don't care what the crisis is. Chair will be busy, so we're into September.
Yes, sir. September fourth.
September the fourth. Are we all set? Please all get your phones, mark your calendar so that there is no question that the planning commission will meet on September fourth, okay, commencing at seven PM. Let's change that to seven.
Let's get our watches all.
Because it's no doubt gonna be a long one.
We will try not to keep it. We're gonna keep it bite-sized for you.
You need to be fair and reasonable. September the fourth at seven PM.
I promise not to do what we did with the LDRs when we had multiple workshops.
Yes, let's try to, yeah, you know. We all want to give it our best shot, but really there are practical limitations. We can always, you know, continue it and come back at a second date. In all fairness to staff, if some of these future meetings look to have extraordinarily lengthy topics, you may want to be prepared with a continuation meeting date later in the month in the event it should become necessary. We're not privy to all the things that you're lining up, but if the agenda gets beyond three items, experience has shown that we run out of clock time. And so it may be necessary for you to be able to propose a continuation meeting date on the spot if we're not able to properly get to the issues. That would simplify a lot of our concerns going down the road on some of these things.
We will work together. One of the things that I, as the city planner, wanted to pose to you all is I normally like to do briefing sessions with you individually as the topics are coming before your agenda. I know the city manager does that with the city council members, and I would like to see if you all would be interested in having individual briefings on the agenda topic to understand the ins and outs of, and Mr. Chair, that's certainly up to you. I'd be more than willing to do that with you all, even if it's just a telephone call, if that works for you all.
Yeah, that would be, that'd be, Debbie, that'd be a great, that's a great idea. Great idea.
The position of the chair certainly is that that's long overdue and should have been instituted twenty years ago. Better late than never. The chair would certainly welcome that, and I, if it can be done, I don't mind arranging as long as I know it in advance. Not give me five minutes from now, we're gonna have this. I might well be able to come down to the office and meet with you.
Okay.
I think it's an excellent idea, something we should have done a very long time ago, except I know staff was a lot smaller then, and it's not much bigger now. But you'll find, I think, that we're very, very cooperative on this.
And Marlene will be organizing those briefings with you.
Marlene, you have nothing else to do in your life?
She has absolutely nothing to do except to organize these meetings. And whatever whatever form you all individually would like, whether it's telephone call, I'd be more, if I need to come to your office, we can also make that arrangement as well.
Now, you don't want to come to mine because the parking is horrible. For those that have ever been downtown, it is not fun. It is ridiculously expensive, and you never know when they're gonna have to close the building because a pipe broke or some disgruntled member of the public chooses to throw in some threat to the structure or the people. And so I would be better coming to your location.
Thank you for that, gentlemen. I do appreciate that.
All right. I believe that concludes all the business currently before the commission.
I move adjourned.
We are adjourned.
We are.